Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our virtual watchers on our computers this evening. We do have a few presentations for the month of October to go with to begin, and I'm really excited to honor and recognize the kindness clause in this presentation. A member of the New York State Virtual Board Association has come to join us to welcome the board and obviously the brains behind the kind of shot of Christine here. So I will turn it over and have Christine just up and talk about this right now. It'll be good.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. And I'm really pleased to be here tonight to uh, I'm pleased to I'll be here. Uh, pleased to be here tonight to recognize the South Lunt's Falls School District for for as our champion for our champions of change for kids. This is banner for the district recognizing the kindness clause expansion, which I understand that you received $100,000 expansion, but that was last year ago. I want to tell you a little bit about the champions for change. It's an unsolicited recognition. So the memorization part of the New York State Virtual Board Association reviews the influence and these bigger articles and so on to see the things that can be recognized in our various communities. I cover Area 7, which is from, it's called the Council of the Southern Alabama and West, about Scotia. I personally come from this community, City School District. So, um, so that's how, that's how this comes about. And I, if you could, Christine, right? Jane, I'm sorry, if you could come on up and tell us a little bit about it. I know that you're serving people and Christine told me that you're still serving people in this pandemic. So, um, tell me, I read about the police system. I'd love to hear more about that.
So typically, we thought of the month like our original plan. And then we'll sit down and
Before I open up?
Yes. Um, I, I didn't see lunch thing up. And so we wanted to be all relaxed and please school your fellow like they can march through in queue and from summer to every other week. And our members, everything we had was 20, 25 days ago. Um, that came on or came to the project to access it. There were some names that were not included, but there were names that came in that come and just needed it. Point system is, um, that was a difficult one. And we did a little bit during there just to keep things mobile side of the closet or mobile. So many brushes, toothpaste, toothbrushes, hairbrushes, cleaning supplies, things like that, foot bath towels, bath mat, shower covers or two, diaper, cups of beer, some drink. We do have, um, the coffee, the tables, the motel, so we can hear them. I have a couple of little light rays, those are what we need. Um, there's some vegans. Uh, we do a short. Anytime when they come to the closet, you know, she, when people come, we give them a order for the next time they're working, they can come and access it and they just check off what they need. But I feel the most like we're saying to the time, sometimes we're always tend to get because of this progress and they don't think they have to work at that point. They don't need, um, that is government in what sort of the operation, job control. And they've got a lot of things in that they cannot ship overseas. So he's been doing tons of ones, which is nice. So little things like that really help you get like send that and hand these things that I'm
Thank you for your effort. I commend everybody for the clap, for your partnership. I guess I wish you well for the expansion, for the class expansion. Although I would hope to come today and So once again, recognizing the South Falls School District for the kindness clause expansion.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming to the North Country, who are really just like the 17 from uh, we would like to have you on the initiative of this honor recognition. And it will go in our, the district office just as soon as we get it up there. Uh, also during the month of October is recognition. Uh, and you know, these people have definitely volunteered their time or this people has volunteered and especially this year and when the other year in these new times, we've got a lot to learn, a lot to take in, a lot of change. We definitely pivoted from being completely in person to completely virtual to now a hybrid of both. And we're very thankful that everyone is stuck with us and listed and supported the decisions. I mean, you can't do that without quality members on the education. So with that, we would like to present some certificates to each of you. Tim or Kevin, you want to come and help me for a second? The windows may don't want to get up and you need to be at a distance. Uh, so I'd like to recognize our vice president, Mr. Bill Melder. Vice President, John Carroll. Mr. Roger Fabeli. Mrs. Kimberly Minto. Mrs. Lisa Holgate. Mr. Kevin Olstrander. Mr. Jeff Brady. And we have two board members that couldn't be with us this evening. Dr. Christine Dawson and Mr. Thomas Kirk. So we're glad to meet you guys as well. And then, and we have our new student, they are members, need to be recognized as well. Anna Curry and Jenna Farrell. So congratulations. Want to speak, roll into the next one, Mr. Melder? Right, so we wait right along in these times. Okay. Uh, this year, as we talked about, definitely brought on some different teachings and things that we have to do on this way of vulnerable. And one of the things that I think that we are very proud of is that we are able to provide opportunities for our families who at times can be medically vulnerable or uncomfortable coming back to school during these times. And yes, it was mandated by the State Education Department that we had to provide these opportunities, but how we provide them is really dependent on the district. And so we had done surveys all along, as many of you know, and we had about 17 to 20% of our families in their 12th grade say to us that they really were unsure if they could send their kid back to school. The good news is we have 80% that want to get in the building and want to be with us or in person, and that's great news. But we have to think about that mother 17 to 20%. And so, you know, at first it becomes a crazy idea, and then after a little bit of a crazy idea, it really comes together. I know that many of you have seen articles in the paper, and tonight we want to just quickly talk about what a K-5 virtual school looks like in our area. Uh, this is not an endeavor solely by South Hills Falls. We worked in partnership with Lunt's Falls and Abraham Ling, because we find that really are rewarders during these times. We need to support students no matter where we are. We have to do it in a way that we can be able to handle the situation at any time and still open our doors for our students there for that. So our K-5 school is completely virtual. We even have a virtual school principal. I can't wait for these ladies to come up. Gerald Solotto is our building of virtual school principal. It is the largest building, I think, right now in the district. Uh, and then we have two teachers, Kristen Abrams and Maria Whitney, who really quite honestly are just killing it on virtual piece. And I think they'll be doing lots of trainings on how we're still incorporating these people in their person. I do love the shirts and they can talk to about it better for that. But I do know our families have settled in and they're really doing this very important thing with us. So Gerald, I'll turn it over to you and then whenever we can introduce them, they're all about it.
Great. Well, thank you very much for having us tonight. So yes, I have the virtual school principal for K-12, but really the big focus is kindergarten and through fifth grade. You can imagine, starting a school year of over 350 students with a building without walls has been quite an endeavor. Um, I want to thank Alex Spata and the entire tech team because we could not have done this without them. They worked so hard at the beginning to really make sure everybody had convos and were up and running, as well as the directors of technology that they would have been waiting at Lunt's Falls. It definitely had a unique set of challenges. We're doing preschool distance standards to do this, but as we have now worked out things now that we're about six weeks in, I am very happy to say things, I'm going to regret this from right now. And everybody has really settled in and really started their routine. So today with me, I have Maria Whitney. Maria is the third grade teacher at Harrison Avenue. For this year, she is, for now, she is our virtual school, one of our virtual schools, third grade teachers. Kristen Abrams is an AIS teacher at Harrison Avenue, and she right now is teaching first grade virtual. Think about that. So I would like them to come up and they have some things to show us. But you know, I have popped into Maria's class, which is very fun because I can just literally pop it quickly. I've popped into her class and read poems to her kids, and I've gone into Kristen's class and actually taken part in advance part. So it's very fun to be able to jump in for these classes.
All right, I am starting. Um, so like Mrs. Spata said, um, we are teaching in the virtual school. And you know, indefinitely, it means, they don't care not to see us because it really is a school. Um, our kids have set up amazing learning spaces, just like we have as teachers. So that gives you a little idea of what our virtual classroom is from our homes. So our collage of sort of our students, you know, we do our Google meets and the kids are loving seeing each other. Obviously, they miss being in the class, but we've heard from several students, um, their favorite part of the day is when we have our Google meets and they can talk to one another, they can share what they've been doing, and we can collaborate even there. One of the important things that we wanted to make sure we were at around the time is virtual school is to make sure that the students still have the same opportunities that the in-person students have. So you'll see there that we did first day of school pictures. They had their signs up, so we did send those home and a supply item was picked up at first before we started. And then we have crazy hair day, we have dance party day, and then we also have independent spirit days, which we'll continue to interact with time together. So this is first grade expectations. What we do is we break it up into two cohorts. So we have morning cohort and we have afternoon cohort. That can be flexible based on what parents need or what families to be doing. Sometimes parents are unable to be at home due to daycare situations or even having to go after work and no longer working at home, so their cohorts have had to switch. We did create expectations in our classroom. Cohort one is, this is their expectations slide we go over every single day. Mrs. Solotto also does do the announcements on the daily thesis. We do the pledge of allegiance. We talk about gratitude. We talk about joke of the day. They love that. We do drumroll please and they get three picks. And then she will do poems. As far as the daily schedule, um, when we started looking at how we're going to set up our day, you know, that really was probably one of the obstacles when you're splitting up both the classes to cohort and trying to figure out what work they can do asynchronous while the other group is in front of you. So we came up with ideas of sharing agendas every day in the morning so that students know exactly what they should be doing and at what time. Um, this is an example of a first grade agenda. Sam?
Sure. So we have our first grade agenda. So what ends up happening is every night I schedule it on Google Classroom. It goes out at 3:00 in the morning so that the families receive it so that they can plan their day. I also send it on a reminder app so that families can get it there as well so that they can send it to babysitter if they need to or date their providers. Um, what we do is we set it up. So I would have morning meeting and afternoon meeting. I will also tell them what they need for the day in order to be able to line the meet and also what they need in their learning space. Because this is what we said, the learning space is very important and they love their learning space. And then we go through the schedule. So we'll do math, we'll do ELA. We do have great collaboration with our special areas and we are able to link those forward into our daily agendas and we have recently done that and they have loved it.
This is the whole example of what does an afternoon cohort see? So that's probably going to be the one areas that we've got a lot of feedback on. So when they come to school in the morning, they do have asynchronous work. They have some independent practices that they need to do that they will not need to line anymore. But they know that they should get up and get ready for school, just like everybody else is. Once they come to their meet at 12:30, then they're with the teacher for the afternoon and they do the same exactly that the morning group did. So all the students are following the exact same schedule, it's just a little bit of a flip flop.
So Mrs. Solotto talks about the tech department and all the people that are involved that we can collaborate with this company. The collaboration is key. I didn't touch on the special teams, but we have many, many, many other people who are part of this. We have our own classroom teachers who are in person right now. We have our instructional teacher leaders who are helping us. We have our building administrator who are helping us start our special ed. We are helping to prove it, just as we would be in person, but we are virtual. And so we do need that collaboration and it's key to our success.
And with that, the virtual school website has been a great resource and that's where we've really been able to lead our students and our families to get these resources.
So now this is what this is. We have a flip ramp and we did ask the kids a few questions about what they felt would help with school. Okay. So what we started off with was talking about the learning space, what do you like about it? We also talked about a lot about what has really set the expectation of who is your role for your learning program? But we need not take care until it's not even a parent, you take care of either a grand parent or a sister. So we touched on that. What is your favorite part of the work for school day? We touched on that. And we also discussed your favorite app that you use because we have all had to have a lot of different applications that we are using on a daily basis for our kids. Depending on the grade level, they're either familiar with or not. And another thing with the collaboration, we were very important to have professional development in the springtime and right now so that we can go ahead and inform those applications. So here are some of our friends. Start with a couple of third grade friends here. In here? Oh. So some of the feedback that we did have from parents with the students in the virtual school was that it was refreshing to see, refreshing to see that, um, their kids were able to do what they could do in person. They're also able to do in virtual school, and they are insane with what is happening in person. So they're standing at that curriculum that is happening outside of school, that's happening in school, and vice versa. They were also talking about the fact that they really enjoyed being able to see exactly where their student is at. So if their student is struggling with word work, if their student is struggling with a math problem, they know that they're struggling and they can get the answers of what made it.
The other thing that we were able to see was we really talked to our students about reflecting upon their homework and how virtual school is going. So usually, once a week, we would check in. And it's really interesting and nice to see what a student shares with him in that and that component. A lot of the kids really like the apps that they are using and a lot of the parents, like Kristen was saying, they really appreciate just how structured the day is. I think it's very important that, you know, we keep it very simple, but also that we're following that curriculum and the And just a disclaimer, I did this crazy hair day and my students did that. So normally, you know, the tires are green or have little ponytails, but we were celebrating five weeks of virtual school that day. So, um, FlipRamp is an amazing app and I know that both myself and Ms. Abrams, we've used it throughout the years. The kids love it because they can, like you see, they can have video response. They can also go in and watch each other. Kristen and I have already started talking about how we're going to collaborate fourth grade and third grade together. We're really looking forward to that as well. So sort of like our app central, obviously a virtual school, it's going to be definitely app central. The plethora of mountains that we have, it grows with the day. Um, we're very conscientious though of not overloading our families with just one more thing. So we really feel that what we have shared with them, they are able to manage and also they're in a very driven point behind this.
This is some examples of some work that we put on here. So you'll see that we use Seesaw a lot. We also do have the module work that we have through our math modules that we have up there. We've done a bit of quizzes. We also have our writing pieces that go through there and they can do all of that on Seesaw as well. Some more star work. We did celebrate firefighter week. So my little friend, he did bring note to firefighters and he took it upon himself to go with his mom who works with him on a daily basis and bring them trips. This is our
This is our last one.
This is our last one.
You know, we sort of smell this tagline, I think, from different people on the planet. When you talk about the obstacles of what we've sort of seen over the last like six weeks, you know, there are family obstacles and that's inevitable, but at the end of the day, every day is getting a little bit easier. And continuing to build relationships with our families, with our students, collaborating with one another is making everything possible. Um, you know, I feel very fortunate to have this experience this year and I know that students are definitely writing all about it in the fair time. Thank you so much. Happy
And as you can see by their enthusiasm, first of all, even just for us to care, but their enthusiasm with the kids, it really is a school. And they said that and it truly is working. From the morning announcements that Gerald does, to activities, spirit, celebrating five weeks, my goodness, he's already been five weeks. Um, Lord, now, but I think one of the things that we learned is it is very different. Simply for us at South Hills Falls, the idea of having kids in the mix in their regular class while the students are teaching in person, we knew that was a way of work. It's a different experience and it needs to be. As Maria said, there were obstacles every day, the people were calm and they felt that they're calm. Uh, we have 15 teachers, is that correct?
Fifteen. No, 17. Seventeen toll teachers, five for us.
Seventeen toll teachers with five for Lunt's Falls and 12 from us here on campus. All working very hard to make this an experience a real one. Kristen, I'm so appreciative that you did intend that and it outcome is the same and that we are following that same piece. Because I think there are times where people think because it's different, it's everything is different. And really, it's the how, not the what that's different. So it's something we've been trying to work on for a number of years and I think, you know, as I said in the beginning, which are definitely, you know, very subject to the rule of this, but I would say congratulations to all 17 teachers that are doing it right now and it's hard for them to come here. Um, and it is something that now happens to themselves before school began as well as so. So thank you again to all of them. I love you all. So thank you again to all of them. I love you all. Thank you for your work. So each year, we have our annual system audit report and Mr. Teacher has meeting right before this with our audit committee. And we'll turn it over to them to present and then we'll, during our meeting reports, have an audit report.
First, I'd like to go over the last meeting we're on here. This is where we find news and items that we note to the school district administration. It's on page seventy-five. Under the first, "Unappropriate fund balance." At the end of June, the school district is over the four percent of the fund balance that's allowed. And that's also explained on page fifty-four. See there, page fifty-four, that you're at five point five percent, which is not drastically over the four percent. And it's a good thing, not only in certain times, but in a greater basis in the town, especially in C and A. It's going to happen in the future. Next, I'd like to go over page twelve. And this is a financial statement. It includes the district's balance sheet. And in this, we bring in all the funds plus the school district's assets and the community debt. See that on the very bottom, it doesn't look right, seventy-one million dollar deficit. There's a very misleading in that if you look at the above, there's a liability of one hundred and twenty-seven million, which is the long-term health insurance that has been estimated by the actuaries. And they do this for all the districts in the state. This liabilities have increased drastically in the last three or four years. This year, it also has increased a lot. And then if you go to page thirteen, this is the normal balance you can see in the school district. You can see in the very far left column that you have a fund balance of twenty-four million dollars. And just have a drastic change from one statement to another. Really important statement really is on page thirteen. These are real numbers. Liabilities that the districts have been paid for many, many years, or whatever. The health insurance liability actually will be issued. The district will be getting a new second option. We'll see what they determine that liability issue. And then next, we go to page fifty-three. And this is the results of the general fund from June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. You can see on the very bottom, the district had a three-point-two million fund balance. And received more revenues than we expected last year. And unfortunately, that is because they had expenses to go to school. And we see this in all the districts that we audit, pretty much experiences pretty drastic additions to the fund guns because we still had school, but didn't really have the expenses, you know, without the school. That's really the main thing I'd like to relate to the board, the administration. Overall, it was a great audit. So I agree with you on the very good audit. Your staff does a great job. Questions? If you don't feel free, you can kind of look at it and ask questions later. Don't feel free to call us, Kevin Collins, whoever.
Yes, I just wanted to talk about the Bozies. I want to bring up everyone here, the job that you've recently just did. Devin said that Bozies, they probably wrote their, their whole, everyone's chat. So great as a leader, or some would be more difficult, but we are here. I'm sure we, if you basically have a student that is one of the Bozies, whether it's dinosaurs or something that around that. And you've been a great teacher there, performing performances as well as you. And it's amazing what you and Bozies can do in this challenging time.
We're a safety and security committee back today in this room right before the meeting. We really want to put updates for that group. Pre-COVID updates with our angle spaces, with some other conversations around drills and things like that, and keys and big boxes. And then post-March with the conversations of how do we regulate ourselves safely? And what are we going to continue to be able to ensure the safety of our staff and students right now? So it was a good catch-up meeting and, you know, that will be the meeting for John and Kristen. That was it. Thank you.
So at Hough High School, on September twenty-third, about one hundred and twenty-five seniors took the SAT exam at Hough High School and about the same amount of juniors sat for the PSAT on October fourteenth. Having these exams on virtual Wednesdays allowed for all classes to run as normal and except for those sitting in those exams, there was no interruption of learning. Teachers and students continue to find ways to make our virtual learning work. Creative and outside-the-box thinking has shown a lot of strength, shown the strength of our school in overcoming obstacles at every turn. It is taking a lot of effort from everyone, but the collective dedication to making this work has been inspiring. Borough RAC loaned the high school another ten picnic tables and bringing our total for outdoor seating to seventy, both allowing students to enjoy some pressure and to reduce the number of students in the cafeteria and auditorium when the weather permits. It has been a very popular option and will very much be missed when the weather turns colder. Our A T and monitors have pitched in on virtual Wednesdays in a variety of roles by helping with some routine cleaning and disinfecting, to crack for any exams, to helping out with our departments with filing and organizing resources. They are ready to help in any capacity and it really has made things more functional lately. Students continue to respond well to all of the changes at the high school. While the masks, the one-directional hallways, and the spaced seating in classrooms and during lunch are certainly inconveniences, they continue to do their part to keep us open and moving forward. After getting feedback from staff and students, on Tuesday, October thirteenth, the high school eliminated homework from the table to give everyone a ten-minute break to stretch their legs, take a mental breather, and for students to potentially attack family and teachers they need to see. We believe it is in everyone's best interest amid this stress and anxiety these times to prioritize wellness. This proposal was well-supported by students and staff and so far, it has been well-received. Looking ahead, the high school will host its first fully virtual open house on the evening of October twenty-ninth. Mr. Lewis, Mr. Covey, and teachers from the high school's building leadership team have been hard at work designing and developing a plan so parents can get the information they need as well as establish a relationship with the teachers who are currently working with their students. At all of our elementary schools, on Thursday, October first, we held our first virtual open house that consisted of presentations from all of our academic teams and content departments. We received very good feedback from families who could not only get the information helpful, but were also grateful that they could again access the presentations at any time. Although, as one well, we absolutely miss having families visit in person. Teachers and students are excited that clubs have started moving virtually. We're looking for more opportunities to connect students and families with the school, especially for virtual school students. Our HSA help with the car wash fundraiser begins this week. And keep an eye out for upcoming fundraisers with this Ortega Oil Company and for OWWMs Scaryware. Picture date is Monday, November second for Group One hybrid students and Thursday, November fifth for Group Two hybrid students. Sixth grade virtual school students and their siblings will have their pictures taken in the afternoon of November fifth and all other virtual school students will have their pictures taken on January eleventh. This information has been sent home to families and added to the OWWMs website. Our Breathe Room, which stands for Breathe, Reflect, Acknowledge, Emotions, is a new space in line with our focus on social comprehension that is dedicated to assisting all students in learning about practicing or reinforcing strategies that can be used to alleviate some potential stressors. This space will be available to assist our students with multiple resources. The activities that students will be participating in will allow them an opportunity to explore and learn about themselves, their reactions to setbacks, techniques for emotional regulation, and to gain a better understanding of their social and emotional world. We are extremely excited about this new and important resource for students, staff, and families and would be glad to present more details to the board at a later date.
Okay, at Vallet Elementary, Vallet Health Health its first virtual open house on Wednesday, September thirtieth. It was a well-attended event and our teachers did a great job demonstrating all the great things that are happening in our building. Picture date is Tuesdays, October twenty-second and it is a great day. We'll retake on October twenty-third. The best team is excited to announce and watch the Seven Habits of Happy Kids initiative. On Thursday, October fifteenth, all families receive a copy of the book, The Seven Habits of Happy Kids by Shonda. In addition, an introductory letter and associated calendar was included. Since the staff and families were introduced to the community and kids of seven ages were entered after the reunion, each Monday, families will see a parent's card, which will offer guidance and discussion after reading the habit slash chapter through the selected week. Included will be a leaf to send out and send back to the school with a family name indicating engagement. Please leave a link to explore the habits tree in the cafeteria.
At Tango, they had their first virtual open house on September twenty-ninth and although it was different format, we received feedback immediately. Picture date is September twenty-eighth and our picture retaking will be on November sixteenth. And our first HSA meeting of the year was virtual and held on October fifteenth. Our next meeting will take place on November second. Tango is starting a series of spirit Fridays as a way to bring some fun and energy to the building. Last Friday was Bowl of Friday for students who read Blue or Blue Lovers. And this coming Friday is Swallow Shine or Blitz and Glitter Day. And we can't wait to see what exciting outfits we see.
At Rowan, they have the first virtual open house on Thursday, October eighth and it was a well-attended event and our teachers did a great job demonstrating all the great things that are happening in our building. Borough called their first HSA meeting on Tuesday, October thirteenth that included a live auction. Picture date is Thursday, October fifteenth and they recently added and included their fall fundraiser, the CNH fundraiser. Lastly, our teachers and students have been enjoying the sixteen benches that were installed on the summer beyond playgrounds. These are funded by our efforts from our foundation and there's nothing to embarrass them that can please that.
We now have our first public forum we've been getting. Moving forward, eight minutes. We received our attendance in prior meeting minutes and said I am paying fees. So there are requests. They're paying them in a local person, a local potential, a visa, all in favor? Understood, Mrs. Madison, we said I am seeing through and are there any further questions or clarification?
I have a couple. Um, first of all, Karen, um, the letter, um, one of the projects that we're looking at is Music Theater International and it's a place to develop both kids' and performance. And I think we talked about teachers, the late kind of thing, a lot of the obstacles by, um, students, parents, and students in different age. Um, I was saying, um, some of those and, um, the case that that one was done. So the idea is to provide a via virtual streaming, a long-term show. And they're going to be working some of that back. And so, um, December eleventh and, um, we're going to be, uh, helping with the occupation and the delay and that type of thing there. And the proposal is that we're going to do a, um, thing that we're doing there. You know, definitely, definitely have a truly amazing, I think, about the nature of the virtual. Um, also, um, under one of the each, um, you'll see that we did put in a little development calendar, um, and very similar to past years of that, um, with how we, um, maybe for a minute, uh, brought the product and moved to history, um, we are for that. Um, we really, um, partly helped to generate some, um, some, um, communication there. Um, and then, um, each time, the donation, um, small, big, or otherwise, um, that, um, as my dear mentioned several, uh, we also have, uh, donation money involved in some of the, uh, as well.
And then, first, I'd like to send that into you, Christine.
Uh, starting with eleven, uh, operation and payment. Uh, as many of you know, our director of soul separation is not born, is scheduled to retire other than, um, they know that. Um, I know it's hopeful that within seven years, they will be getting a meeting, um, as a party for the open, um, the dead is in the name of Dr. Furba and, um, Mr. Stefan Klaub. Um, we will take it in order, uh, it was approved next Monday, in the year of the day of the death. And then go and write into our, um, database, um, in the books. Uh, letter B, um, that's a little bit of payments. Um, as we mentioned in our safety meeting, we did mention the target higher, uh, temporary staff in that middle of the day shift.
with our entire, um, temporary staff, um, in that middle of the day shift, that would be able to, um, clean the hall, perhaps, or whatever. Um, I would love to, um, letters up, it is established that a position that is a really change is final. Um, we're establishing a change of position at the helm as according to a teacher's age, um, stage, first of all, we do like taking over the goal. Uh, but this allows us an opportunity, um, especially if, um, we're creating, um, and teach something a lot and that she does have a good role. Um, so, um, so she needs to take care of her board. Uh, congratulations to our chief of appointment, uh, Kelly, not you, with a special education office. We don't need that, it doesn't take them out.
Any more members, any questions, clarification? They're paying, and they have a motion, motion from Jim, second from Jen, all in favor?
All right, Ken.
May that, please. We do receive our special education report, actually, as seen, see, for, for, for. Well, Miss Nistelz, thank you, yes, if that's requested. Are there any candidates, questions? They're paying, and they have a motion, both, measures from Roger, second from Jeff, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. I mean, if there's a case, fine. Motion's, any, any, two floors. But I also work with, I think, a policy, um, for, for. Anything else, any questions?
Just a, a couple of comments, um, I'm even naming our policy, we continue, that's a couple of, um, and then the other really important part is the first week. Um, we're talking about some additional communication, more strategy, and, um, what happens there and what happens. Um, C4 is actually our, um, biggest change, uh, that I want to make sure the board is aware of. And also, um, we've got a lot of, um, any person, um, where, um, we're at. Um, we set a calendar and we need a calendar, almost complete year, and then they, um, obviously started, and right now, we started a calendar. About 24 hours. And, uh, it all does some attention, we set vacations for a normal setting, and, um, we travel around the place. And then, uh, we did change, and, uh, what's changed right now is our calendar, uh, from six to twelve, three. And as our ladies on board, um, know, um, if, are we moving on or are we still on? Group one, group one normally is any person, um, on Monday, Tuesday. And then they go for both Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And they Friday, on, and schedule about, and we'll already take each other, uh, we, so we're there. And that was a lot we covered, right off the start, we were, uh, basically, so that. Uh, group two, um, is virtual, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and we will hold it, and then third, we'll be Friday. Um, to say that schedule, um, because like she, we definitely talked about in the first part. Uh, we do, um, parents are very busy, that schedule, who they are, we build a routine, and, uh, teachers are very good. And I'm planning, um, we're watching for that too. And maybe from a day, you know, a week of Monday and Tuesday, like, um, the need of, um, Thanksgiving, and it goes, um, on that. And what would happen is if you looked at that, when we came back in December, our producing, we'd switch whatever we wanted. And it may not seem like they're a good deal, but we can continue, especially for our most well family, that some people may be homeless or students. Um, and there's a day, we need that for the work. So in order to make, um, more frequent schedules for November, December, and that's been the words, not by the calendar. And, um, we need to have a virtual school day, um, Wednesday, Thursday, and then in return, we're giving, um, our families and our, um, staff, and our two days that were twenty-two o'clock. And then on September 21st, actually, we have a holiday, um, and it, uh, at the 2020 summer, we did, um, really with our families as well. And that's the, um, um. Um, they can move it, um, the staff, we don't sign, uh, we change it, is that with all this season, something? Uh, okay, um, the staff, we don't sign tomorrow, so it's families, and, uh, the video, um, and, um, she, she know that. So that my family can understand, um, we, we change it, uh, for this, um, for that.
Before having that, of course, in particular, regarding the, uh, change of calendar. They're paying, and they have a motion. Motion from Kevin, if that, Roger, all in favor?
All right.
They've been, this, uh. My little word of the world, I think, while we're, my board member, that we, uh, we expect to back virtual this year. And all decisions begin, um, in two years, but in this, there's some sessions starting this day to turn up, uh, works out.